It being 6:30 PM and in accordance with our agenda, I'm ready to call the meeting to order. I'll ask for a roll call of counselors present. I note that all are present visually. Counselor Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Golembeski.
Here.
Counselor Mataronis.
Here.
Counselor Moore.
Here.
Counselor Mushin is here. We have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order. The first item of business is interviews with two individuals who are interested in serving on the Little Compton Free Public Library Board of Trustees. Those two individuals are also both with us. Shirley Hardiston and Claudia McNeil are both present and have communicated. I would open then the discussion and unless someone has a reason otherwise, I would suggest we use alphabetical order and ask Ms. Hardiston to be the first that we interview. Is that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
And I'll just ask that we go in our typical alphabetical order and pose questions to these two candidates. Let me say that this is a remarkable situation in which we have two candidates or a single seat on the library board with great qualifications and great recommendations from all sorts of people throughout the community. So it falls to us five, we five to make that choice. Counselor Anderson, would you like to?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. And I second your sentiment about the having two good candidates and the difficult choices this is going to present us. My question, and it'll be my question for both of you, I'll just disclose that I once served on the library board back in the early 90s. And my experience was I went to the first meeting chaired by Carlton Brownell. And the first thing he told us, there were several of us who are new, was that, he said, there have been three chairs of the Free Public Library Trustees in 114 years. My father, my grandfather, and myself. So that I was new to Little Compton then, so I was given a lesson right off the bat. But but here's my question. Both of you would be joining this board at a quite, under quite different circumstances. That is, the long-serving librarian is, has resigned and there's a search for a current librarian taking place now. And there has been a quite a bit of turnover on this board just in the last year or two. So I'd just be glad to hear from each of you, and Shirley first, what you're thinking is about how you are going to step into this situation.
First of all, I was very pleased when I was approached to see if I was interested because libraries have a very special place in my heart. I grew up in a big city, Louisville, Kentucky, and the public library was the first place that my mother let me walk to alone. So I have a very special memory of that. And I even had to cross a railroad track to get there. So that was really remarkable. But libraries were very important to us in those days because most schools didn't have libraries and we got to spend a lot of time in the public library. So it, I'm very much interested in promoting libraries, especially our library, and keeping them active as resources for the community. I've served in several executive positions on other organizations in town. And I know the importance of having all of those organizations coordinate with our library to bring information and bring programs to our town. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for that. So I think I would, I would like to see that in terms of be involved in programming, if you will. And I think I've enjoyed, I always have enjoyed serving in board positions and executive positions. And this would be a very interesting time to be doing that because of the search for the new librarian. And so I think this would be the perfect time to to step into this role.
Larry, can I, can I speak for a second? I know we generally don't do it like that, but since we have the two applicants here, why don't we have them answer the same question at the same, same time? Claudia can answer that Larry's question now so we can get a, you know, get a better understanding of where what they're going to bring forward on the same question, if that's appropriate. If not, we can go the way we normally do.
It's okay with me if it's okay with Bob.
No objection here. Yeah, that's, that seems fine. Anyone else have an issue with that?
The only thing I would say, the next question we should give to Claudia, let her answer first and then Shirley, just so it alternates back and forth.
Good idea.
Good point. Thank you.
Thanks. So go ahead, Counselor. Same question then posed to Claudia.
Right. Do you, did you get the gist of my question, Claudia, about, you know, entering this board at this time under current circumstances? What, what your thinking is about that?
Um, I did, but I didn't have anything prepared. I was wondering if I could just read my letter of intent and then try to answer your question, if that's, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't have a problem.
To the town council, please consider me for the unexpired seat on the library board of trustees. I love libraries and Little Compton's Brownell Library is awesome. It's the hub of the community with so much to offer to people of all interests and ages. The staff is a wonderful bunch of miracle workers eager and willing to help whenever they can. I was the children's librarian in a small central mass town for a few years so I can understand a little bit of that side of how libraries work. And since the COVID concerns have caused the boards' meetings to be virtual, that should not be an issue for me. I'd love to help the library going forward with its coming challenges. Thank you for your consideration. And the next coming challenges obviously are the, the big one is choosing a new library director. And I understand that the new library director has to have a master's in library science, which has not, which has not happened, which is not, Beth does not currently have that master's degree. So that's going to be a plus that the person has a master's degree in library science. And I've been, um, I've belonged to so many different libraries with, and witnessed different library directors, the way they work, do their jobs and stuff. And I think I'd be able to, to see how the library director wants to work and the direction they want to go in and be able to choose a good, help choose a good director just based on all the, just that the knowledge I've had of working for and working with different library directors.
That was my, that was my question, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Both answers. Thank you.
Counselor Golembeski.
Okay, well, that's the same question of both of you again, and we'll start with Claudia first. Just to alternate the order, so to speak. So the library, obviously I have an ancient tie there, and maybe I shouldn't have said ancient, but I have a tie there, is, is two separate boards. There's a private board and there is a, the town board. And you're right, our funding from the state is, is based upon the fact that we have a master's in library science as a director. Beth was allowed to do it because she was in place before the law was actually in place. So she was grandfathered in, if you will. Challenges. I guess my question to both of you would be, how are you going to address the funding issue of a library? Obviously, for what the previous director made, it's not going to be as enticing as it could be. So how would you address funding and how would you reach out to find a new director? What, what means would you use to reach out? Now be my, to you first, Claudia.
Right. Um, I have no idea how to address the funding and how do I reach out? I would, I've never been on the board of directors. I don't know how they work. I, I guess you would have to advertise the position and take applications and do what you're doing, interview people, check out their resume and interview people. And probably visit the libraries that they've worked in and talk to the people who have worked for them and some of the, some of the patrons of the libraries and see if that library director has, has done the job well where they are. And if they're not a director now, just go to where they're working, if they're not a director, and find out from the patrons and the people who work with them if they're doing a good job. And that's, that's it.
Thank you. You all set? Okay, Shirley, your turn.
Thank you. The funding question, I would have to take a look at the budget, which I frankly haven't, the whole budget, you know, revenues, expenses, that sort of thing, and the salaries, and take a look at that and become quite familiar, become familiar with that. And look at what current salaries are for the type of person that we would want to attract. I think in terms of reaching out, I think we have to be aware that it's a whole new world in terms of how people find jobs these days and look for positions. So I think we'd have to be cognizant of using that kind of technique. The online resumes, the, the services where you can post your job, and the new LinkedIn, those kinds of things that indeed is one of them, one of the online resume services. So I think we, we would need to really explore that so that we could really broaden the search and attract people that would be interested in this kind of position and make sure that we're using the methods that people are using today to find jobs. And of course, post in the newspaper, ads in the newspaper and that sort of thing. But certainly do, do both, the traditional and the newer ways of finding candidates.
Good answer.
Okay, I'm all set, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Mataronis.
First of all, I'd like to thank both of you for applying. Unfortunately, there's only one position open, so I just had a couple of quick questions. Shirley, how often do you, do you go to our library? And do you help out at the library at all when you're there?
I haven't been able to go. I, I worked pretty much, I started tutoring again in the, in the school systems. And so I haven't been able to go recently, but I used to go quite frequently and use the, the books and the books on CD, which I, I used to have to commute to New York when I lived, when I first moved out here. So I used it for that. And no, I have not been able to volunteer at the library, volunteer within a lot of other organizations in town. But I haven't been able to volunteer at, at this library. I did work in a, I worked in my, I worked my way through college, actually, working at the University of Louisville Library and assisting the, a lot of different, the rare books collection, the, the back office, the ordering of books, purchasing of books. So I have, I have that experience. It was very important to me. That was a very wonderful experience that I had those four years working at the university library.
Very good. Thank you. Claudia?
Um, I have not volunteered. Oh, yeah, I did. I forgot. Um, I volunteered two summers in a row to, I ran an art class and for preschoolers. Well, actually preschoolers up through elementary and during the summer as a summer activity for six weeks, I think, four to six weeks. And so I did that. I also volunteered at the book sale every year for the past, I guess, three or four years. Um, so I've done that for volunteering. And also I volunteered, well, it was my own thing. I did my own story hour for a family in town and the librarians were, have been really helpful to me for, to get books that helped me read books to the kids that I had to work with and stuff. It was great. They were amazing.
Very good. Thank you. This question is to Claudia first, and that would be, are you going to have the time to dedicate to this position?
Yes. From what I understand, it's not a lot of time, but since they're searching for a library, the director, like I said, visiting the libraries that, that the, the applicants have worked in will probably take up some time. And I'd be willing to do that. I guess I'd have an issue going into the libraries, though. Because I do everything virtually because I'm high risk for the virus, so.
Okay. Shirley?
Same question?
Yes.
Yes, certainly. I, I would certainly make time. I, I'm, I'm sure that part of this is going to have to be done virtually because of the situation that we're in, which greatly increases the ability to interview people at the appropriate times. And we, several years ago, we finished a search at the Congressional Church, which ended up being done online, a lot of it done online. And it was quite, it was quite successful. And so I'm, I'm confident that we can do that and that, yes, I would have the time to. I would certainly make the time to devote to that.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm all set.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Okay. Yeah, thank you both again for, for stepping up. There's been a, I don't think we've ever seen so many letters of recommendation for candidates. So that says a lot about both of you. So I think that's going to make our job very, very tough.
Good.
So I'll start with Claudia this time because Shirley answered first the last time, I believe. Or was it the other way around? I can't remember.
It's, it's okay. Whatever. I'm fine with either way.
So I'm going to ask you, Claudia, what's, what's the most unique characteristic or experience you have that you can bring to the board of the library?
Um, I probably belong to every single, um, group that meets at the library. I belong to the knitting group, the book discussion, the cookbook discussion, which is a lot of fun. And, and I love walking into the library and asking one of the librarians, can you just give me a stack of books that you know I'm going to like? And they're like, sure. And they give me a stack and they're all right on point. They really know what I like to read and they, they, they're very accommodating. They're wonderful. So I just, I have a good relationship with all the people who work there and I'm very appreciative of the library being there and being such an important part of an important place for the people in this town.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Shirley, the same question. What's a unique experience or characteristic that you think you can bring to the board?
I've had two major parts of my career. My first career was teaching. I taught for 17 years in public schools in Connecticut. And so I, I bring that aspect to understanding the value of libraries for children and for parents. I, so that I think is one major part. I've also, my second part of my career was I served as an executive at one of the huge insurance companies in New York City. And so I learned the hard way, organization and organizational development and the, the techniques and procedures of, of running of an organization. I was responsible for a fairly large department there. And, and I think my experience here in town of serving on different, different groups and, and knowing what we could do together with the library, what the garden clubs and the, and the wellness center and those kinds of groups in conjunction with the library could, could make it a very active and vibrant force in our community and resource in our community. So I think the skills that I've learned in both of my careers would, major careers would help with that, would be an asset.
Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I would close out with this question, first to Shirley. If you were in our position and looking at the candidates, tell us what it is that makes you best suited for the task that we have of choosing the person to sit on this, on this board? What, what is it about you that is particularly significant?
Um, I think my ability to organize and my ability to relate to people and my experience in like job search that we're, the search that we're going to be undertaking now and sort of my enthusiasm for the library. You know, Southwest Airlines former CEO used to say, hire for attitude, train for skills. And I think enthusiasm and excitement about an organization is something you can't teach someone. They have to come with that. So I think that would be an asset for me. That would be one of my points.
Okay, Claudia?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Faced with this choice that we have, what is it that you'd like us to consider that is your, is most significant, your most significant contribution to what we're about to choose a board member for that you bring to this, to this job?
I guess probably what I've stated already, which is my relationship with the library and the people who work there and the patrons.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Great.
You guys have a tough choice.
What's that?
You guys have a choice. We're both good.
Yes, thank you.
I'm glad I'm on this side of the table. Yeah.
Thank you for making this, thank you for making this a difficult decision, by the way, ladies. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It'd be nice if one of you, it'd be nice if one of you withdrew and make IJAP so much easier.
Oh, we're not going to make it that easy for you.
No, I know. I can see that. All right.
Right, Claudia? We're not going to do that.
I think Shirley would be a great choice.
Oh, and I think, I think Claudia would be a great choice.
Oh, that just made it even more difficult.
I think you have a tough choice.
We do not have on our agenda, though I wish we did, entertaining the possibility of adding a person to the board.
You can work on that. You can work on that next meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you both very much. That, that has been, just as I expected, very informative and very compelling arguments on, well, not even arguments, proposals as to why each of you is best suited. I would like to declare a recess so as to convene the council meeting at seven. And I will alert you that I'm going to suggest that we move this item to the head of the agenda so as to be able to make this decision early on. And these ladies, who I'm sure their enthusiasm for the library is only equaled by their enthusiasm for watching a council meeting, would not necessarily need to remain for the entire meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll declare that recess then now until seven.
Okay, thanks. Now, how do we do this?
Okay, now Claudia, oh, she left. Claudia's there. Shirley left. I'm just going to put you down to an attendee rather than staying as a panelist right now, Claudia. Okay?
Okay. Doesn't hurt. [Music]
Claudia McNeil's name fresh in our mind for another opening on the library board.
I'll second the nomination and I voice my concerns as well. This is not, not an easy thing to do at all.
The motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, seconded by Counselor Gollumbesky to appoint Shirley Hardeston. And they have made each some comments. Are there other comments?
This is Counselmember Anderson. I will just second what we told them and what Garen Paul suggested. I will say that on my short tenure on council, some of you have been here longer, that this is really one of the hardest votes I've, I feel like I've faced. Because, you know, this is, together, they sort of represent the perfect complement of experience and skills. You really want to have them both. So all I'll say is that this is, I really appreciate their applications, their devotion, and their commitment to this. I really appreciate it. And I'm really suffering here as I get ready to vote, so.
All right.
And, yeah, if I can make a comment. Yeah, all I say, all I have to say is that I regret that there aren't two spots on the, on the library. Not saying that the other board members, you know, shouldn't be on there, but, you know, two great applicants. And, you know, this just makes it that much more difficult. So.
Okay. Yeah. I would third that motion or whatever, whatever is appropriate with, that's the challenge. I'll then ask for a roll call vote concerning the motion before us to not, to place Shirley Hardeston on the board. Counselor Anderson?
How about I?
Counselor Gollumbesky?
I.
Counselor Mataronis?
I.
Counselor Moore?
I.
And Mushen I. That's unanimous. I think that is certainly appropriate in a case like this. And, and I would just amplify what the others have said. I would say that as someone who's been here a while, that that is, yeah, this is a case of having to choose between someone who has one set of abilities that we would covet and another person who has a different set that we would very much covet. So I, Claudia's name will certainly remain in my memory as the person that is, we're looking to appoint next. Thank you. And thank you, ladies. I don't, I, I can't see that you're on because I can only see the panelists that I'm allowed to see. But assuming you're there, we appreciate you both and thank you for your willingness to participate. The next item of business then would be the approval of minutes of October 8th.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 8th Town Council, Town Council meeting unless anybody has any comments or questions on them.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mataronis, seconded by Gollumbesky to approve minutes. Any discussion? Counselor Anderson, how do you vote?
How about I?
Counselor Gollumbesky?
I.
Counselor Mataronis?
I.
Counselor Moore?
I.
Mushen I. Thank you. The next item of business is announcements. I have one that is published, and that is a reminder there will be a townwide flu clinic offered at the school on November 5th. That would be Thursday, November 5th at 5:00 P.M. So if you have not had the opportunity anywhere else to get yourself a flu shot, this would be a place to do it on Thursday, the 5th. It happens to be that there's a council meeting shortly thereafter. I would encourage all the counselors to get a flu shot so as to be able to have a very successful council meeting that evening.
And Counselor Mushen, might I add that that is by appointment? So they would need to go to the website in order to find the link for that, making an appointment.
Thank you. Yes.
Schoolflu.com if I'm not mistaken.
Would you say it one more time?
Schoolflu.com. But there is a link on our homepage, on our website.
Thank you. Yes, so that, that is by appointment, and one needs to have that appointment to be able to get the shot. The next item is old business, and it is the proposal for a third revision, the Special Directive 5. This third revision would, as its predecessors did, move the extension of the state of emergency to the day after the second meeting in the next month, that is November. So obviously, it is also, as you noted in the draft, as its predecessors were, extended the state of emergency through the 20th of November unless renewed, modified, or terminated by subsequent order. There is certainly the possibility that the council seated would choose to do differently, and that would be obviously their prerogative. But I believe we should have this in place so as to, as we have done each month, move the ball one month further down the field. And then, I see no reason to terminate a state of emergency unless there's counterargument.
I'll, I'll move that we go with the extension.
I can.
The motion is made by Gollumbesky, seconded by Mataronis to extend the state of emergency in the town of Little Compton through the 20th of November. Is there discussion?
I just had a question. And again, this, the next decision will be made by the next council, however constituted. But do you, Bob, or Tony, have any sense whether most other communities are maintaining their emergency status this way? I mean, as long as the governor is, it seems logical that we do. But do you have any sense of what other communities are doing?
Yes, we, we are, have been asked to update a Google Sheets collection at the League of Cities and Towns in which they are keeping track of this. I've not looked at it recently enough to answer your question for currently. But I, as of about a week ago, the preponderance of towns remained in a state of emergency. Would that, I'll ask the administrator if he's had a chance to look.
That is correct. In fact, in Bristol, as of last night, we extended hours to January the 5th.
Okay. Yeah, it is common among the towns to remain, as you said, in keeping with the governor's steps. And this seemed to be a way that we could revisit it on a regular basis and make this decision.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote for that motion. Counselor Anderson?
I.
Gollumbesky?
I.
Mataronis?
I.
Moore?
I.
Mushen I. Thank you. The next item of business is a report, sorry, is to receive a report from the police chief on the response to the D E M regarding farmers and crop control permits. I believe the chief is online with us.
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. Just as I had spoken in related last Town Council meeting, I think there was some confusion in this item, whereas the request was not for D E M to ask if there could be hunting on Sundays. The request came early in my tenure as chief in regards to the use of nuisance permits on Sundays. I met with Jim Lawson from D E M's Division of Alkoh culture. I, being neither a farmer nor a hunter, wanted to investigate a little further, get the opinions of some others, including the Town Council. And I think it just, it got a little confusing there towards the end. So all in all, D E M is not requesting to lift the ban on hunting for Sundays. However, they are requesting to continue the use of nuisance permits for those animals that might be destroying crops only after the approval of the chief and Mr. Lawson and D E M do their due diligence and investigate any reports of crop damage. So we're just going to continue to do what's been done in the past with the nuisance permits. They'll be looked at on an individual basis, and ultimately, it will be my decision as well as the input from Mr. Lawson.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I did speak with the chief on a number of occasions, and I think he has the matter well in hand. And the chief has handled it, I think, discreetly and professionally. So I endorse his decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Motion to place on file?
Second.
The motion is made and seconded, made by Gollumbesky, seconded by Mataronis to place the report of the police chief on file. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Anderson, how do you vote?
How about I?
Gollumbesky?
I.
Mataronis?
I.
I.
Mushen I. Thank you. The next is a report from the council president on the United Congregational Church request to use Pike's Peak. That memorandum is in your package. Basically, I confirmed with the office manager their intention to follow state guidelines and masks and social distancing. I also conveyed to her the fire chief's decision that neither a ban on open flames nor a presence of a firefighter was required. On behalf of the council, I then approved that request.
Motion placed on file.
Second.
Motion made by Mataronis, seconded by Gollumbesky to place this item on file. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Anderson?
I.
Gollumbesky?
I.
Mataronis?
I.
Moore?
I.
Mushen I. Thank you. The next is new business to receive letters of interest for three positions. Alternate for the Board of Canvassers, Member of the Harbor Commission, Member of Tax Assessment Board of Review.
I'd like to report that I have no letters of interest for the Board of Canvassers at this time. I have only one letter of interest from Benoit Gothier for serving as the recreational boater's representative. He does seem to qualify. And then I do have one letter of interest from the incumbent Tax Assessment Board of Review member, which is Mr. Robert Booth.
As far as the Harbor Commission goes, I was working on a couple of gentlemen that fit the description that was required. But if Mr. Gothier has put his name in already, I would certainly support that. I'll make that motion to approve Ben Gothier.
I'll second it. It's Counselor Anderson will second that.
Motion is made by Mataronis, seconded by Anderson to appoint Benoit Gothier to the Harbor Commission. Is there any further discussion? We'll ask for a vote. Counselor Anderson?
I.
Gollumbesky?
I.
Mataronis?
I.
Moore?
I.
Mushen I. Thank you.
Can I, can I just, Ben Gothier is listening right now when Carol informs him, tell him that we haven't been having meetings. There's nothing really going on at the point, and of course, it's the end of the boating season. So anything that generally does come up, Mike Masser and myself, and if it requires both chiefs, we generally handle it. So just letting Mr. Gothier know that it's, we haven't been really having any meetings. We did have one a couple of weeks ago, just to let him know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Booth to the Tax Assessment Board of Review?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gollumbesky, seconded by Mataronis. Any further discussion? A vote. Counselor Anderson?
I.
Gollumbesky?
I.
Mataronis?
I.
Moore?
I.
Mushen I. Thank you. The next item of business is a public notice for the Rhode Island State Planning Council's Transportation Advisory Committee, and the notification that they'll be accepting public comments on the Long Range Transportation Plan entitled Moving Forward R I Transportation 2040. A web-based hearing is scheduled for October the 29th, which is a week from tonight at 5:00 P.M. In addition, if you look at the document itself, it allows for written comments to be submitted as late as 3:30 P.M. on November 9th. I don't, I've not been able to review the document in enough detail to have developed comments. I would propose that we would charge perhaps the administrator, and if you like, myself, to review it and, and act on our behalf. On the other hand, we could, we could return to the council on November 5th and still have time to take the written comments forward or provide the written comments. Would be, would be kind of two choices I would suggest we, we consider.
Or Counselor Anderson, alternatively, we could sort of do both. I mean,
We could do both.
We could delegate you to, to review it, you and Tony, and either act on it or return to the council on the 5th if you felt the need for the council to endorse.
There's a particular point. Well said.
I would make that in the form of a motion, that is to, to delegate the council president and the administrator to review this plan and to either act on the council's behalf or to return to the council on the 5th with a recommendation if needed.
I can.
Go ahead. The motion is then made by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Mataronis. Is there further discussion?
Just, just one comment. By participating in this, could we avoid the rumble strip situation like it happened last time?
I don't think the rumble strips came as a result of our participation, but possibly, yeah.
Very good.
Thanks. Then we'll vote on this. Counselor Anderson?
I.
Gollumbesky?
I.
Mataronis?
I.
Moore?
I.
Mushen I. Thank you. The next item of business is a memo and presentation in which the council was copied by Counselor Anderson in his package that he forwarded to the administrator, police and fire chiefs, solicitor, and beach commission regarding Lloyd's Beach and Rhode Island Road. And I know the administrator has a series of things that have already been achieved as part of this. But the basic tone of this letter, as I understand it, is this tasking occurred, and that committee has not come back to the council, and it's an encouragement to them to do so. Is that? and it's an encouragement to them to do so. Is that fair?
Right. Again, I'm headed off the council, and I know that this, the summer, we adopted unanimously a four-point resolution back in June at the beginning of the summer. As the summer unfolded, there were immediate issues that had to be dealt with on a daily or weekly basis. I understand that. Nonetheless, as I review our resolution, I do think that, and the next council will have to decide whether, how to follow up. But I did want to sort of lay down a marker and a reminder that I do believe that the spirit of our resolution identified some issues and needs that will have to be, that won't go away, that will still have to be addressed. So I provided, as you described, Bob, I addressed this material to the committee that we created, copied the council, provided this sort of simple graphic presentation of, that tried to depict, without getting too fancy about it, sort of the change on the landscape down there, at least legally. And then, you know, the substance of it was, at the end of the presentation, a list of, and it's just my opinion, others might have come up with a different list, a list of the kinds of stakeholders who actually have an actual property interest in Lloyd's Beach or an official or other kind of interest down there that might eventually have to be included in developmental policies and management approaches down there. So I just wanted to pass this along while I had the chance, while I was on the council. So it doesn't, again, it doesn't demand any immediate action by the council. That's the gist of my story, so.
Thanks. And I think it's very useful for that purpose, and I'll give certainly the administrator a moment to say anything he'd like. But this group, I think, is the right group to make this next foray into what is a very challenging problem. I mean, it's not a quick throw an ordinance together and that'll pass and we'll be all set. So I think that's understood well and it obviously is being worked already in many respects.
Mr. Chair, may I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
There are really three experts and one almost expert on this. So the first one was Phil Wilbur, who provided maps, drawings, and all sorts of other interpretations of this piece of land. And they're in the town hall. I've seen them many times. So he was great at it. Carl Hafner, our first lawyer, Noel Field, was also an expert at it. And then, not to puff the sky up too much, but Gary Mataronis is also an expert on it. So we have three experts, and Tony is about to become an expert on it. So, and Tony has dug his heels in there. He's made sure that people get along. So we have a lot of people that have real expertise on this. So I think it can be resolved, frankly, through Tony's efforts. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to make one comment. You know, obviously, I live right here in the situation. And Rhode Island Road was jam-packed the majority of the time, especially on the weekends. And what I was trying to avoid, which can't be avoided now, was parking along Secana Point Road because it was parking along Secana Point Road all the way up to the yacht club parking area. There was parking on that little corner that I mow, and people were even parking underneath the no parking signs because, you know, I guess they figured a $20 fine parking ticket was okay to park there. So there is definitely a problem there. I'm not sure what we can find for other parking situations, but we could certainly delve into something. But while I get the stage, I think we need to increase our parking fines all over town because I think it's a situation where a $20 parking fines, say, well, I'll pay that because that's a normal fee I have to pay at the beach. So I think we gotta somewhere between now and next summer, increase the parking fees to 75 bucks or whatever the chief reigns would, and Tony Texera would deem appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Mr. Chair, once again, Tony Texera put himself in the middle of this matter and deflated all sorts of problems and made a lot of problems go away, and he was superb. So whatever we're paying him, it's not enough.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll second that, oh, my goodness.
I'm going to go to the administrator. I've tried to get you to the floor, and now it's yours.
Well, I'm not sure how much more I want to say now, all those comments. You know, maybe I just want to be quiet and go away, you know, just let it be. Now, certainly, on a serious note, and many comments have been already made, and certainly the memo or the notes sent to us by Counselor Anderson certainly will be very, very helpful, no question about it. And certainly we'll be looking for him to continue to be a resource with the many others that we're going to have to tap into. But to that point, you know, we have addressed some of the concerns on it, but you're right, formally, we have not come, have not met, and have not come back to the council. But that is the intent to do that sooner than later, much sooner than later. But, you know, some of the points that were made already, raising the fees for no parking is definitely. I mean, right now, the fee that we currently charge, it's just, you know, it's a parking, it's what's charged at the town beach, you know. So they're thinking, hey, 25 bucks, that's not too bad to park there for the day. So certainly, we need to consider that. The other issue you mentioned is Rhode Island Road be town residents only. I would say we should go with one sticker, townwide. And if we do that, then there'll be one way to address that, to prevent outsiders from parking on Rhode Island Road and any other place that the town, you know, encouraged to. So at this point, there is many things that we need to consider and continue to do that and come back to the council, definitely, with the formal recommendations. But please understand that I'm not the expert. I'm learning.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. May I be heard on that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think 2020 was an exceptional year in terms of the number of folks that were using the resources down at Secana Point. You know, as Gary noted, every weekend and even during the weekdays, Rhode Island Road was packed. People were parking down Secana Point Road. And I think we're to a point where we need to keep exploring our options to make sure there's access to all the resources at Secana Point, you know, especially for our residents here in town, and making sure that it's safe for everyone to do so. So Tony, I really appreciate all the work you've been doing on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, this document went to the group that we're talking about. So I see there's not a need unless someone feels there is to do anything with it other than to acknowledge its receipt. All right, and thank you, Counselor Anderson. I'm grateful for the work on the way. The consent file.
Motion to place a consent file on file unless anybody has any questions or comments on that.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mataronis, seconded by Golembeski to move the consent file to file. Is there any further discussion? We'll call for roll call vote. Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Golembeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Motion, aye. The payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Motion made by Golembeski, seconded by Mataronis to pay the bills before us. Any further questions? Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Golembeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion, aye. There being no further business before us, I declare the council meeting adjourned. Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
It was a pleasure serving with you, sir.
Oh, you'll be here next time.
I'm told I'll be here again. You'll come to another meeting. Thank you. I thought I was off the hook tonight, but apparently not.